Good evening. Welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Committee of the Whole Meeting of November 7th, 2016. This is a committee of the whole meeting and by that this is a session where the Board of Education really studies issues in depth. We're going to have various presenters this evening on different items that are coming before the Board. However, there will be no votes on items tonight that are being studied by the Board of Education. After our discussions this evening on each item, the Board will decide if we are ready to go to a vote for it, for that item, the following week, or if perhaps it was just an informational item, or if it requires further study and it will be voted at, voted on at a future date. So if you're looking for voting items, those will happen next week, but frankly, these are really informative meetings to tune into. I do encourage folks to tune into the Committee of the Whole Meetings because you do probably get more information out of these meetings because the discussion is so in-depth. The first item on our agenda this evening is Audience Communications. If you're in our audience and you would like an agenda, you haven't picked up one yet, the agendas can be found on the table just outside the hallway. If you're at home and you would like an agenda, you can find one online. Our website is www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to Agendas and follow right along with this evening's agenda. The first item on our agenda this evening is Audience Communications. I do have one blue slip, so I will give a quick overview of Audience Communications. This is a time that is designed specifically for the Board to listen to members of our community. It is not designed as a question and answer session, but rather a time for us to listen to members of our community on their suggestions, their comments, their questions, et cetera. As far as response from the Board on items that may be coming during Audience Communication, let me explain what the role of the Board is and the role of the Administration, so you understand who your response might come from. The role of the Board is threefold primarily, which is to hire and evaluate our Superintendent, to set policy for the district, and to set the long-term goals and align the budget to those goals. So if your questions or comments have to do with those items, you can expect a response back from the Board. If the item that you're going to be discussing tonight has to do more with the day-to-day operations of the district, which frankly, most items do, those are handled by our Superintendent and our administrative team. So if your, if your questions or concerns identify an operations-type issue, you can expect a response from our Superintendent. We do have one blue slip this evening. The Audience Communications is three minutes in length for each person, and we will have Mr. Johnson timing us this evening. So if you hear a little beep, you'll know that you've hit your three minutes, and we would appreciate it if you'd wrap up your comments. We have just found that to be a little bit more polite way than interrupting our speakers. The only blue slip I have is from Jeremy Cobb. Mr. Cobb?
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. I've spoke to the Board before about the enrollment and facility study, particularly regarding CAS as my personal interest. But before the election tomorrow, I just wanted to express my concerns very, one more time. I know those of us in the community are pretty disappointed that recommendations will not come until after the election. That essentially denies us the information we need to make an informed decision at the election, and it also shields Board members for at least two years from any ramifications of any decisions that are made. In addition, I feel that the millage is getting pushed, put at risk by this process. I can not tell you how many times I've heard from community members that they voted for the facilities in 2013, and now they feel like it was a bait and switch. So they ask me if their local school isn't going to be renovated, and why should they vote for the millage? And I can tell you, the reason I chose Livonia, as I've said before, instead of Novi or Farmington Hills or other areas, is because I knew about the renovations, I knew about my tax dollars going to the school, and I naively believed CAS, where my son would attend school, would be renovated and I wouldn't have any issues. Now, less than two years later, I'm hoping we can keep it open. That brings me back to some of my concerns about the entire process. I think it's very disappointing that with the exception of a few people picked to be on the Committee, which I'm not even sure how they were picked, we are not allowed to participate in the study. We were told we cannot attend the meetings, there would be no minutes or summaries posted, and we couldn't even have the names of the Committee members who were representing us. I have been in email correspondence with Mr. Archibald, and he's been great at answering my questions and helpful responses. But that being said, without all the data, without knowing what's going on in discussions, I'm kind of shooting in the dark with my questions. I don't know if I'm really asking the right questions. Finally, if the Board is concerned about long-term utilization and fiscal solvency, I think it's impossible to have a comprehensive study only looking at the schools in Phase Four and Five of the project. The order of renovations, from what I was told, was determined based on the state of the school at the time of the bond renovate, or the bond passing. By leaving out the other schools in the decision on if you should close a school, you're really only basing the cost savings on the bond. It means that you're not necessarily picking school that's best for utilization and best for fiscal solvency, it's just based on the bond money. I have, from what I've seen and heard, there's also no look at what will happen with assets after a school's closed, and which schools would maybe generate more money on a market if they were sold or run it out compared to the schools, compared to other schools, I should say. Maybe if all these variables were looked at, all the results would come back exactly the same, but we just can't know that without having that information. I'm guessing I'm about to run out of time, so I look forward to speaking with you all many times over the next month and a half as we go through the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to participate in Audience Communications this evening? Okay, seeing none, we are going to go on to our next item. Our Speaker at Audience Communications this evening raised several points, and many of them are probably going to be covered under this first item, which is Item Two, Committee of the Whole, which is Review of the District's Enrollment and Building Utilization, with a timeline for the Community Forums. Ms. Oakwist, would you like to lead us off on that item?
Certainly. So really, this evening, we're just reviewing the timeline for the Community Forums. We wanted to be sure that we continue to get that information out to our community. Just to note, we have all of the information regarding the Committee available on our website. On the main page of our website, there is a Schoolhouse icon. It's relatively large on the left-hand side of our opening website. Every meeting packet from, since the commencement of the meeting has been uploaded through last Thursday's meeting. So I think last Thursday's meeting packet, I believe, was about 73 pages long. So there was also available on the website, which might be helpful to folks, as we move forward, as some background information, are two articles that talk about the impetus of the studies done by Plantmore and Cressa, as well as a video of two different Board meetings where there was extended discussion and presentation on this topic. So just as a reminder, we would invite people to access that, and we did email all of that information out to our community last week, as well as part of our continuous update. So what I'd like to do is ask the co-chairs of the Committee to talk a little bit about the timeline moving forward and the opportunities the Board will have to get information and updates, as well as opportunities for the community to give input on the recommendations of the Committee.
So, thank you Superintendent Oakwist. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Dr. Terrell and I just want to review the dates and events coming up in terms of the Community Meetings. November 21st, at 7:00 is the Community, Committee of the Whole Meeting. The last time that the Board has received a detailed overview of the work of the Utilization Committee, if you recall, was back on June 13th. And so we'll sort of recap some of that and then pick up from there in terms of bringing you up to date in terms of the big scope of what's been done with the Committee since June 13th. On November 29th, we have a Staff Forum scheduled from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. at Riley Upper Elementary School. And then that event will be followed also on the 29th with a Community Forum at Riley from 7:00 to 8:30. Then two days later, we have another Community Forum. That again is from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. The location will be Frost Middle School. And those opportunities, obviously, as we've all participated in Community Forums in the past, will be the opportunity to do an overview of the tentative recommendation at that point and to receive feedback from both the staff and from the community, based on the tentative recommendations. Then on December 5th, we have another Committee, the Whole Meeting. That will be at the Livonia Career Technical Center. I just point that out because this is our normal location here, so we'll be at the Career Center. And the purpose of that night will mainly be a cue and answer session, or at least a cue session with Dr. Terrell and I and the Board, as you've had an opportunity by that point to review a lot of information with regard to the recommendation, as well as to hear from some of the Community Committee or Community. So at that point, we'll have a Community Question and Answer Session with you. On December 12th, the Committee of the Whole Session, again, at the Career Technical Center. And it's on that night that we'll make the formal recommendation to the Board. And the intent would be to then have the Board vote at the regular meeting on December 19th. And again, that meeting will be at the Livonia Career Technical Center. That's an overview of our Community Forums and meetings related to this topic.
One thing I would like to add to, Mr. Archibald, the November 21st meeting, which is when the Board's going to have a rather lengthy presentation, and the community is welcome also, that will also be taking place at the Livonia Career Technical Center.
Thank you, yes.
Yes. We're anticipating that there, I hope there are a whole lot of folks in the community who want to come in and hear personally what the study has been about, what the plans are, what the recommendations are, and why they are or are not, as they're being presented by the Committee. But therefore, we need a larger facility. So it'll be at the Livonia Career Tech Center, which is directly across the street from Churchill High School, if you're not familiar with its location.
And I'll just add one additional note. Thank you for going through that timeline. One of the important pieces is after the Board has the opportunity to receive feedback from the community at the Community Forums, there is a final meeting of the Committee scheduled for December 7th. So the purpose of that meeting, that's not on your list because that's for the Working Committee. We wanted to bring that group back together and be able to share the feedback from the Staff Forums and the two Community Forums, and be able to have the Committee take a look back at all of that feedback and determine whether or not there are modifications or adjustments to be made to the recommendations prior to it being finalized for the Board of Education. So the, we felt it was important that the Committee had an opportunity to hear back, feedback from the community, and so we'll bring that compiled information to the Committee as well, so they have that opportunity. And just to clarify, we've been asked if these are different forums or the same forums, so both on Tuesday night and Thursday night, it will be the exact same. The format will be the same, the presentation will be the same, it will just be in two different locations. So folks can attend either of the forums, and they will receive the same opportunity to hear information as well as to provide feedback.
Ms. Bonfield.
Mr. Archibald, I have some concerns about having large groups of people come together, and we, per our Board policy, we don't reply back to individuals at the meeting. We send information back. Oftentimes, the speakers are presenting information that may or may not be factual, and we don't always make those corrections publicly. I'm wondering if we can, and I'm not expecting an answer, I'm just throwing this out there. At the November 21st meeting, if there's any way we could set aside some time after the Committee of the Whole Meeting to answer some questions after the presentation, rather than having a lot of people speak beforehand, you know, give them the opportunity to hear the information, and then possibly move the speakers to, Committee responses to the end of the meeting, after they've had an opportunity to probably get many of their questions answered. And then I'm wondering on the December, at the December 5th meeting, I don't have a suggestion for the public to speak before or after the meeting, but I'm wondering if, again, we can't at least provide answers during community speaking to, at least respond to the ones that we have, we know the information to. There may be some questions that need more research, but in order to make sure that everyone is informed, if we can answer some, at least some of those questions that get brought up, and try to provide the correct information to the community.
And Ms. Bonfield, were you saying the December 5th meeting?
The December 5th meeting, provide answers, and also the November 21st meeting, after the presentation.
Provide an opportunity for questions.
Move community speaking to the end, so that people have the information. And then if their questions are not answered during the presentation, there would be an opportunity for them to ask, and probably ask more informed questions at the end of the presentation.
Mr. Johnson.
In response to that, that seems to me to be what the forums are going to be for in the following week, than to take a Committee of the Whole and try and do it pre-
I'm not, I'm not talking about it being a forum. My concern is if we have 30 people come up to speak at the meeting, and they're all presenting information that is incorrect for one reason or another, I'm, just for lack of information or misunderstanding, that, that just gets thrown out on the table, and then the community hears that information and takes it as gospel. I would like, if the community present, if the community members come up and speak and they provide information that is not correct, that that information be corrected at that time, rather than waiting until after the meeting and sending them possibly a response in a letter.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson, do you-
No, I just, I think that's going to open up that Committee of the Whole Meeting to almost a free-for-all, which, which is what the forums are designed to do, to present the information and get the feedback from the community at that time. As, I understand what you're saying, is that there may be misinformation.
Provided.
Well, misinformation coming from community members-
Yes.
-that they don't have, have all of the facts. But I think if we try and correct all those facts in a Committee of the Whole before we get to the forums, I think it makes it a little bit cumbersome. That's just my feeling, Ellen.
Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you, President Burton. So just, you know, I know we touched a little bit at Subcommittee Meeting about, you know, 15 minutes for Audience Communications, and then bringing people back at the end of the meeting after the agenda's done. Is that what you're referencing, Mrs. Bonfield? Or are you just saying that you're just afraid that people are just going to come and give information that isn't necessarily accurate, you know, but so be it, but they're going to sit and listen through the whole meeting and get the information? You know, we have, they have every right to come and talk, and if they're not right, they're not right, or maybe they don't understand something about the whole process. But I think we need to hear them.
I, I completely agree. I'm not saying that people shouldn't speak. I'm saying that my concern is, is when they do come up and speak, there are corrections that need to be made to that information, because they either have misinformation or haven't gone out and sought the accurate information. And then I feel like that leaves the community hearing only the misinformation. We don't correct it, so therefore, I feel like we're saying that it's all correct, because we're not making any corrections to the information.
Can I make a suggestion on that, though? I know sometimes we don't always respond to Audience Communications, so maybe at the next Committee of the Whole Meeting, we respond verbally to any things that may not be accurate at that time, and then that way, at least, you're getting the information out there to the public, so.
Mrs. Laura.
Thank you, President Burton. Are you questioning maybe the placement of Audience Communication? We always have it at the beginning.
On the November 21st, yes, I am questioning-
So-
-the Audience Communication should be at the end, after the presentation.
Okay, okay, that's what, I wanted to clear that up. After we have the report, it's given, the audience hears it along with us, then do Audience Communication-
Correct.
Because, okay. I don't know what that would take to change it.
Mrs. Jarvis.
I think that that's a reasonable suggestion, because in many cases, some of the community's questions might be answered-
Right.
-simply in the process of listening to the presentation.
Mr. Centers.
I tend to lean toward Ms. McDonald and Mr. Johnson in that if, the presentation itself will be kind of cumbersome that evening, a lot for people to absorb and kind of wrap their heads around, us included. I think the forums really can exist for that purpose, and people don't have to wait a tremendous amount of time for the forums. They're just a week later. So I think, you know, in the meantime, we're always available to answer questions, of course, if people have questions. Mrs. Oakwist or our Board President are always very receptive to answering those questions if there, there is kind of a panic or a misunderstanding. So, you know, again, I, I just kind of think that we have the structure in place here. I think it's, my gut feeling is that this will be successful in answering people's questions, but those are just my, that's just my opinion.
If I'm, oh, Mrs. Oakwist, I don't want to use her. Okay, if I might make one suggestion. The Board is going to be hearing this recommendation for the very first time ourselves, without having any time to, other than hearing it firsthand with the audience, we won't have time to be prepared to answer a lot of questions about it. However, Mr. Archibald and Dr. Terrell will be. I think what we might be able to do is, in keeping with our current format, if we can ask Mr. Archibald and Dr. Terrell, if you can be listening during Audience Communications, and if you can note anything that needs to be factually corrected. There are going to be a myriad of opinions, and we're not out to, to change that. But if you hear factual misinformation, the entire rest of that entire, that meeting is going to be strictly on this item. If you can jot those down and make a point to make those corrections, because you two are in charge of the Committee and you know better than the Board members that you're presenting to, what those answers are. So if you can make a note of what those pieces of misinformation may be as they're presented from Audience Communications, and get those corrected in the same setting, I think that that will potentially solve what everyone is saying. I'm hearing some Board members want to keep our current format, and yet others that have a valid concern about making sure that misinformation is not let go for a week, and the same listeners might not tune in to get the right answer. So if I might ask the two of you to make sure that any misinformation is corrected during your presentation to the Board of Education, I do trust that the folks who would be attending that meeting to speak at Audience Communication, I sure would hope and think that they would be sticking around for the one and only item on the agenda, which is their item of concern. Would that be satisfactory to the Board? Mrs. Jarvis.
Am I hearing you say that if someone asks a question at the beginning, and it has misinformation in it, when the presentation is being delivered, perhaps those specific areas can be targeted and clarified to address those issues?
Exactly.
I'm good with that.
Mrs. Oakwist.
Yeah, I think there's a couple pieces. I certainly understand the initial question. I think the thing that, one of the things that we feel is so important is that whatever the questions are, that we're able to work very hard to answer and provide information to our community and to the Board. So, you know, there are times when, when people may share information because that's their, that's their perception of it. It's not, not an intent to, you know, to mislead, but they truly may not understand that. I think that tells us something, that we need to look at our communication and be sure that we're clear on what we're presenting. And I know one of the things that, that Dr. Terrell and Mr. Archibald are working very hard on, along with Mr. Wills, during this time period, is to have a presentation on November 21st that is very thorough, that covers many of the good questions that have come forward since the summertime from our community members, and asked about different data points, or different process questions about the Committee and things. And I, I think it's important that, and I believe you all feel the same way, from the conversations we've had, our study sessions and Committee Meetings, I know certainly our co-chairs feel, we want to try to be as clear as possible, communicate as much information as possible, and then have multiple opportunities for people to give the Board feedback on that. That really is the intent. So however we can facilitate that to happen, we want to do that. So I know that we've all communicated regularly with folks, either via email or phone, and I know some of you have as well, but we're hoping that, that on the 21st, however we can facilitate that, to be sure that not only does the Board have the information they need, but it's very important to us that the community has the information and understands the information. And so if there's something that folks are not clear on, or that we hear more than once, sometimes I think it's been important for us to think about, oh gosh, we've had this question a few times from, even from our Committee members, right, who have been immersed in this. And we'll come across a question, and we'll think, wow, if this isn't clear to someone on our Committee, then it would not be imminently clear to a community member or a Board member hearing this for the first time. So that's always pause for us to dig deeper and say, okay, how can we clarify this in a different way or share this information? I think we all have a common goal, and that is to do the very best work that we can on behalf of the school district. We know our community cares deeply about this issue, we do too, and we want to get this right. We want to bring you information that is accurate and clear, we want to bring the community information that is the same. So however we can work to facilitate that process, it's part of the reason why we want to, again, not only have the three Community Forums, the Staff Forum and the two Community Forums, but then have, we add an additional Board Meeting at your request in there, to provide another opportunity for the community to share their thoughts and feedback during Audience Communication, but also for you as a, as a team, to be able to dialogue and get questions answered after the presentation, and then again, to come back on the 12th and the 19th. So it really is one of the reasons why we wanted to add in those additional pieces. But if there are, if there are questions along the way, certainly, our co-chairs want to know them, so we can either embed those in the presentation and be able to share that, or so that we can clarify that information. So whatever we, way we can work to help make sure that everyone understands this, so that we're all, that we're at least all talking about the same thing. And certainly, different folks are going to bring different perspectives and a different lens by which they're going to look at the information, and, and that's okay. That's, that's part of who we are in our community. People care deeply about their schools, and we're glad that they do, and so we'll, we'll be able to hopefully have a good deal of dialogue over the next, you know, next six, seven, eight weeks.
One thing I'd like to point out to the community also is the format of the Community Forums. The, as, as they would contrast to speaking at Audience Communication, because they will be very different in their setup. At the Community Forums, which are open to the public on November 29th at 7:00 at Riley, and December 1st at 7:00 at Frost, as Mr. Archibald had stated, what there will be is, is a large group presentation, so that everybody hears the same information again. It'll be again for some folks, because they've heard it at, at the Board Meeting when the Board was presented with the information for the first time. But that way, we make, we are certain that everybody hears the same information. After that, we will be breaking off into small groups, and those small groups will be attended by a Board Member and/or an Administrator, so that, and they'll be designed specifically in small groups in independent rooms around the building, so that everybody will have an opportunity to speak freely, to be heard, and to have a meaningful conversation with the Board Members and/or Administrators who are in each of those rooms. The, the purpose of that is so that everyone will feel comfortable sharing their true thoughts, their true concerns, positive, negative on, on any or all of the recommendations that, that may come forth. It is really our hope that we do hear from a whole lot of folks. I do encourage you to come out to the, the Forums, the Community Forums, if you do have an opinion that you'd like to share, or if you'd simply like to come and learn more about what's going on. I really encourage you to do that. Generally, when we have that kind of a setup, there's about an hour in, set aside for the small groups of citizens to be talking to Board Members and/or Administrators. That's vastly different than the, than the three minutes per person at Audience Communications. We really want to set aside time to hear everybody. While, anybody is welcome to speak at the November 21st meeting, without a doubt. Don't be surprised if you don't hear a whole lot of feedback back at that moment, because the Board's learning right along with you for the very first time this information. Let us all, the community and the, and the Board of Education, start to digest this over the following week, and that's why we've designed two opportunities to sit down together and have some informal communication, and, and share one another's thoughts, and see what the concerns really are, what the suggestions really are. I really encourage folks to attend the Community Forums if they would like to have an opportunity to have that kind of conversation about what the recommendations may be. As we said, Audience Communication is always welcome, but if you want to have the biggest bang for your buck, that the best time to sit down and chat and really share your thoughts, I encourage you to attend the November 29th and December 1st Meetings.
A quick note on November 21st, if folks are not able to make that, we know that's a busy week, that's a short week because of the Thanksgiving holiday. So the meeting will be on the 21st. We will have that uploaded by- We will have that uploaded by the end of the day on the 22nd. So the meeting information as well as the meeting video. So Mrs. Jenkins will have that updated, so if folks are not able to make it on Monday, but they can watch it, they'll have plenty of time over that extended weekend before we get to the forums. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, so the Lions game is a dud.
Right. The Lions game won't be a dud. It'll be a winner.
It'll be a win. Mrs. Bonnefield.
If, if the presentation's going to be uploaded, is there any opportunity for community response after they watch?
Well, that's, that would be, those would be the forums.
Well, if they couldn't make the other forums, or they need to come to the forums to provide.
Certainly if, 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 you know, the, the community is always welcome to contact the board, you know, at any time with their feedback. So, sure. And at the forums, so they'll, as President Burton mentioned, there'll be the opportunity for the interactive piece. There will also be a forum at the end where people can leave written feedback as well. So that could certainly be made available to folks, once we've had an opportunity to go through those presentations.
Okay.
And if you'd like to write to the board, if you're not able to, to visit the community forums in person, or if that's not something that you're comfortable doing, the board email addresses are on our website under Board, About the Board. There we are. So. Any other questions or comments? Alrighty. Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is item three, Finance Committee. Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Burton. The Finance Committee has one topic tonight, which is the bond audit by Yo and Yo.
Okay, thank you so much. So we would like to introduce Mr. Brian Dixon, who has been a partner with Yo and Yo for nearly 20 years of school audit experience, and he's here this evening to go through with us on the financial statements regarding the bond. As you know, we are required to have the bond audited and reports submitted to the state at the end of each bond project, but as, at the start of the bond, the board had discussed at that time with the administration, a desire to be updated annually. And so although Plant Moran is our auditor, as you know, they were here last month giving us our financial statements for the district, there would certainly be no problem if they completed the bond audit as well, but because we do utilize Plant, Moran, and Cressa as our owner's rep, we've chosen to go out and utilize Yo and Yo, who has also been an outstanding partner of ours, to complete the work on the financial statements related to the bond. And so at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Dixon, who will share with us an update on their opinion.
All right. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. In front of you, you do have a copy of the actual bond audit, and then there is an additional letter in there for the sinking fund as well. And then I'm just going to go through the presentation, which will also be on the slides, the slides will be on the monitors as well. So on slide one, we did issue an unmodified opinion, clean opinion. Financial statements were fairly presented. There is an emphasis of a matter that this is only the bond audit. Our opinion is only on the financial statements of the bond audit, only not the whole district. If we go to page two, this is the balance sheet of the bond audit. So you have total assets, which are your cash or restricted assets, 112 million, 261,000 of prepaid expenditures, $228,000 of receivables are due from other governmental units, $26,000 due from other funds, with a total of 112,800,000 in total assets at the end of the year. You did have some accounts payable at the end of the year as well. Those are really just timing of payments of when the invoices came in. Almost 11, or 10.6 million dollars, just a small amount of a due from, or a due to. Total liabilities, 10.7 million at the end of the year, for a fund balance of 112, 102,000, 102 million at the end of the year. Then on the next slide, if we break down those revenues, so current year revenues was 180,000, and that was your investment income, as well as 87.5 million for your Series Two bonds that were sold in the current year. So this just gives you a breakdown. The Series Two proceeds, 38.7 percent. Your premium on the Series One and Series Two, as well as the proceeds from the Series One, which is 52.5 percent of your total over the project, length of the project. And then some, a little bit of investment income as well over the project, $705,000 so far. Then we break down the current year expenditures under the bond. Hard construction was the biggest portion of that, 73.4 percent. Total expenditures this year of $49 million, 49.2 million under the bond, broken down into those categories. Then if we look at the total project on the next slide, this is your expenditures from June 2015, June 25th, 2013 through June 30th to 2016. So almost, you know, three years of expenditures here now. Total expenditures so far, 95, just under 95 million dollars. And again, hard construction being the biggest at 65.4 percent, with other categories in there, information technology, 15.9 percent. Then if we break down those expenditures by year, again, I mentioned those just over the three years, just because it came in just at the end of 2013. So small expenditures in 13 and then continued to rise since then as the project has moved along. Then if we look at your fund balance and break that down, so you sold the Series One again in 2013 and started to spend that down over 14 and 15, and then in 16, you sold Series Two bond, which then increased your fund balance again back up to the 102 million that I mentioned. Any questions on the numbers? Then we also looked at internal controls over your bond project as well. And we had no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies when we looked at in those internal controls. That's exactly what you want to hear. And then we looked at compliance under the bond audit as well, and we had no non-compliance with the testing that we did. As well as this year, we were asked to look at the sinking fund, and we had no non-compliance with that as well. Any questions?
I'm not sure that if this is one for you or for Mrs. Oquist, but I did notice our, our numbers as far as percentages were fairly steady for our expenditures from 16, sorry, from 15 to 16. Never mind. I, this second graph, I'm sorry, was 13 through 16. I'm sorry, I always thought I was looking at year over year.
Yeah, that was the full length of the bond on slide five.
Never mind then, that answers my question. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. Brian, the two on the balance sheet on one of the first slides, says due from other governmental units and due from other funds. Can you explain what's over there?
Due from other governmental units would be a receivable from another local unit of government. I'm not exactly positive what's in that. It's only $227,000.
Yeah, the numbers are relatively small.
Right. It wasn't, I'm not positive of what's included in that number. And then the due from other funds would be if another, you know, if general fund paid for something and then had to be reimbursed. So this was, you know, something that had to be reimbursed to the bond project that was paid for another fund. And the contrary, the $41,000 under due to other, other funds would be the same. So something within the district.
That's what I was going to ask. Those would be internal funds.
Yes. The due from other funds and due to other funds would be internal.
Mr. Johnson, we'll get an answer to you on the first one, which is due from other governmental units. We'll ask Yo and Yo to get back with us on that and we'll give you an answer and an update.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. That's all.
Thank you. Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you. Could the other government units be, the taxes that were not paid? Is that possible?
Not into the bond project.
No.
Shouldn't be. Maybe someone, you paid for something that would be receivable.
Oh, maybe the fees that the city pays. We'd have to pay the city to collect the taxes maybe, or whatever. We'll find out.
Yeah, I'll get you an answer on that.
But as far as the sinking fund, I know this is the first year that you've actually gone over and reviewed that. What exactly did you do? Did you just, does it just audit it like you did the bond?
Yeah, we only tested sinking fund for expenditures. We just looked at the expenditures of sinking fund, selected a sample of them and tested them along with sinking fund compliance, and we had no non-compliance.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions? Just a comment for, for the public, unmodified opinion, that is the highest level of.
Yes, it's a clean opinion.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. President Burton, that's the entire report for the Finance Committee.
Okay, and this will be on our agenda next week for voting.
Yes.
To accept, to accept the audit. The next item on our agenda is item four, Curriculum Committee. Mrs. Laura.
Thank you, President Burton. We have one item on our agenda for Curriculum Committee today, and that is the discussion of the Adult Education Program of Study. Mr. Archibald? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Laura. This is an annual item. Good evening. The state mandated pupil accounting guidelines require that courses counted for credit and state reimbursement be included on an approved list adopted by the School District Board of Education, and therefore I'm bringing to you this evening the 2016-17 Adult and Continuing Education Programs of Study for your consideration for approval. I believe that, a copy of that document was provided to you prior to tonight. The Livonia Public Schools' Adult and Continuing Education Programs have an established history of offering relevant courses for students in the community. The students served throughout this program include those looking for credit recovery, GED preparation, adult high school completion, and adult basic education. The course offerings are adjusted regularly to keep current with any changes to the LPS curriculum and/or state requirements. Overall enrollment this semester is about on pace with previous years, although the enrollment is relatively fluid. And ESL, our ESL program would be an example of that, is students enter and exit that program at various times. Enrollment in credit recovery classes is on a tuition basis. The funding for all other programs is provided through state and/or federal grants. I'm requesting, again, there are no changes to the program for this year compared to the previous year. And so I'd answer any questions, but I also requested this item be put on the consent agenda for our next meeting.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Laura. Steve, when you say there was no changes, were there any classes added, or is it just actually the same classes?
Same classes.
Okay. Great, thank you.
President Burton. Mr. Archibald, you mentioned that it's about the same enrollment as last year. I forget what last year's enrollment ballpark was. What roughly is it right now?
I'm going to not make up a number, because I, so I will get the exact number and get it back to you.
Okay. Not even exact, just a ballpark is.
Ballpark, big stadium, little stadium, I'm, we're talking 250.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, Mrs. Laura. I understand that residency in Livonia is not required. Do you have an idea of how many non-Livonia residents are in the program?
You're correct about residency. I don't know that, but I'd be happy to look into it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
I heard mention at one point that the, there were no more hard copies sent out of the Curriculum Guide, and that it's all posted online. Is that correct?
Yes, we haven't, this hasn't gone out hard copy, to my knowledge, other than being available at the building.
And, and did that, obviously then did not impact the, the number of students that we have? You said that the, the number of students has been pretty consistent.
It's been about the same.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else?
One of our biggest, if I may, one of our biggest marketing tools is word of mouth for this program.
Not working. So are we all in agreement that this will go on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Bonnefield. And President Burton, with that, we, I conclude the Curriculum Committee.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item five, Building in Sight. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Burton. I am happy to report, we have four exciting topics this evening under Building in Sight. We have update on sinking fund projects, discussion of bid results for the Frost boiler replacement, discussion of bus purchases, and discussion of bid results for window replacements.
Very exciting.
It is, very exciting. Windows.
When your windows are not working out, it is very exciting.
Yes, it is. Our, our first item will be update on sinking fund projects. I think we received a, some documentation via either email or at the board table tonight that explains all this.
Paul's handing out a proposed schedule, and yes, over the weekend, you should have received a memo, an agenda, as well as a proposed schedule upcoming. Paul's handing out one of the items as well. What I handed out to you is for some of our upcoming. Turns out that, I believe it's 2017, and fairly consistently, I believe it's 2017, so I used it over and over again as I was typing the original memo, so I fixed the error and reprinted them, so, sorry about that. All right, so what we would like to do is, and I know Paul's going to talk a little bit more in depth, but we wanted to update you on some of the planned projects for the upcoming sinking fund projects that we have, as well as Churchill, which is our main bond project that's going on right now, to give you a little bit of an update where we're at and where we're going in the coming weeks and months. What do you want to?
Sure, I can speak to the sinking fund if we want first. So this past year, we've completed a few different projects. We did some site work at Hayes, Kennedy, and Riley, mostly parking lot replacements, some concrete replacements. We also did some lighting retrofit projects. Those were mostly led by the district, although we were involved a little bit. And a few other odds and ends around the district, but there were, those were two of the more major ones, and we also put new windows in the back building. Thank you, by the way, much nicer in there, it's not the room B. And a few other little projects.
No worries.
Yeah. You know, currently we're, have a couple other projects that we've been working on. The Frost boiler I see on the agenda tonight, that's kind of the test case to try to replace boilers potentially throughout the district and the controls that go along with those. Hopefully that project will go well, I'm sure it will. We also recently had brought before you the high school field house replacements, lighting replacements. That project is currently underway, and we're hoping to have that done early next year.
Do you start at Churchill?
I believe so.
You're starting at Churchill?
Yep. And then I also see, you know, the window replacement at the administration building as well. So there's a lot of different projects going on for the sinking fund. Some of them, Harry and Wayne, the maintenance and facilities guys, and now Phil as well, kind of take the lead on some of them, we take the lead on, but we're all kind of working together to plan out the cash flow and plan out the design work and construction and trying to make sure that everything flows pretty seamlessly along with the bond. So that's worked very well. The big projects we had planned for next year, other than the ones I already mentioned, were some civil engineering projects or more parking lot replacements really. And the five buildings that we had really earmarked were Grant, Hoover, Randolph, Holmes, and Franklin. It's worked pretty well with the bond work being done previously and then circling back around and replacing the parking lots after. If you think about the transformation the buildings undergo, a lot of that comes at the expense of parking lots, especially with the bad winters we've had two of the last three years. You know, a lot of frost in the ground, a lot of heaving, and a lot of, whether it's dumpsters and construction, trailers, concrete trucks, things of that nature, so. It's also really freed us up to focus on getting the buildings done, rather than worrying about getting everybody out of the way so we can repave the parking lot all in the same summer. So this is kind of, just kind of a natural progression and plan that we had come up with originally, was to jump back around and do these five buildings. But we wanted to just kind of talk through it and make sure we brought you up to speed. It's, it's pretty consistent with what we've done in the past. If you think about the commissioning, the security, even the architecture and the construction management firms, we've entered into contracts with the firms that we've chosen, you know, through a pretty rigorous process. And then if we're happy with the work they've done, we've re-engaged them for the following summer. So that's essentially what we're proposing to do with the civil projects as well. We would re-engage NTH, who's worked for the district for a long time on many different projects, but who also did the civil engineering work last summer. So we re-engage them, would be the plan, to do the next five buildings. Those five buildings have a pretty healthy budget. It's about two and a half million dollars if you look at design, hard construction, contingency, and all the other things that would go into that, which is that, which is why we wanted to make sure that we brought the board up to speed with that plan. It's also consistent with what we had done, what the facility assessment that you had charged us to do a couple of years ago had kinda laid out, was that there was quite a bit of civil engineering work to do in the near term, a lot of mechanical and electrical work, boilers, lights. And then further down the road, there was maybe more aesthetic, or more roofing type issues as well. So really, we just wanted to make sure the board was kind of aware of that same plan that we've been talking about, but maybe get into a little bit more specifics at this time. So we do have that $2.5 million budget that I mentioned, that's a pretty high-level budget, right? We're taking some, making some big assumptions on what we think the scope will be. Until we get down and start doing some borings and drill holes and see exactly what's underneath the asphalt, it's hard to really nail that number down. So we're planning on doing another design development estimate in a couple of months, and have a better idea of exactly what the budget would be. But it should be somewhere between two and two and a half. Sorry, there's a lot of talking, go ahead.
No, no, I just didn't wanna talk on your turn. Paul, wasn't that long ago that we did quite a few parking lot projects? I know Holmes had a lot of work done, Hoover had a lot of work done. Why do we need to do more work? I guess is my question.
So we are being very conscious of what has useful life left in it and what does not, as far as the parking lots, just like we've been doing with the buildings, with mechanical units. So in Hoover, for instance, the north lot is actually in pretty good shape. We're not planning on touching that one. That's probably the one that was done the last time.
It was.
The south lot is in a little bit worse shape, plus it took the brunt of all the construction activities. So that is the lot that we're looking at. Same thing in Holmes, you know, we're not planning on doing everything just for the sake of doing it. We're gonna be, try to, try to be very strategic about the lots that we do and the ones that we don't do, understanding that we might have to come back in five or six years and do the other piece of the lot. Holmes is kinda unique because there's a water main that needs to be replaced there. You probably recall that it broke last year, and I think we lost a day of school, if not more. That would be part of that project as well, so.
So it would be completing, oftentimes, many of these areas have two lots, two distinct areas or more. And in some cases, only one was redone. In Hoover's case, that north lot was reconfigured and redone, so this would be the south lot, the one right in front of the school.
Didn't they do the south lot also?
I don't think they did it to this, they didn't do it all the way down to redo that lot completely.
They may have done some patching.
I remember when they, they did the, I know when they redid the side lot over along the north side. They did the main parking lot, you know, a few years ago. And then they did, a couple years ago, they did the asphalt along the north side of the building, and around, I think around the play out.
Yeah, I think that's, that's in pretty decent shape along the north side and around back. We're really focusing mostly on the south side. But to your point, we've had a lot of discussion about, and there's pros and cons, but when you go to redo a parking lot, do you just mill and cap it, which might be a seven-year fix, something along those lines? Do you rip the entire parking lot out and redo it completely, which could be a 15-year fix? You know, one costs X, the other one costs Y. It's really a balance of how many dollars do we have, and what's the scope that we need to tackle in any period of time. So we have been having a lot of discussions along those lines. We're trying to be, as I mentioned, more strategic about it, and use the taxpayers' dollars as, you know, as carefully and conservatively as we can, so.
No, you will.
Okay, Mr. Centers?
Just to that point, I was, just last, a couple weeks ago at Hoover, and I did notice the south lot is in need of some repair, so there are some areas, I can vouch, that do need some work.
Yeah, they were walked, and the sections that were, have life in them.
All these lots have been walked by ourselves, along with the Facilities and Maintenance Department, and actually, they were re-walked by NTH very recently, along with the Maintenance Department again. So we're pretty, pretty close on the scope. These projects are kinda the simpler ones, where we don't think there's a lot of stormwater issues or Wayne County permitting issues, which you know is my favorite topic.
Oh, yes, we are.
Some of the more complicated ones, if you look down below, because you may ask, well, why are we doing these five? But what about Cooper, for instance, or Roosevelt, which were previous projects? Those ones are a little bit more complicated. Hoover, I'm sorry, Cooper has a lot of stormwater issues that we need to resolve. We just don't think we can design it fast enough to get it on the street to bid out for next year. Same thing with Roosevelt, there's a lot of traffic issues there with how the buses stack up on Linden, how parent drop-off traffic works, so close to the intersection there. So those other projects, we're really looking to do a little bit more investigative work on, and we're hoping to maybe start the design a little bit earlier than, you know, next November, but probably not bid them out to do until 2018, so.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. Are these projects scheduled to be done at the same time as the other bond schools that are going to be renovated?
Uh, yeah, the idea would be to bid, to bid these out early next year and then do them over the summer. Usually, it's about an eight to 10-week project, so.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Is the water main replacement our responsibility, or will we tear up the parking lot and the city goes in?
I believe you own the main. Sometimes, there could be an easement, and it could be a public main, but I believe in that case, you guys own the main.
Yeah, I think the discussions have been around with Wayne and Harry that it would be us. That's why we wanna do the lot at the same time. The main is, is an important item, and if the main gets done, it makes sense that...
To do it all at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay, interesting.
So we'll bring you more details on all of these projects.
Right.
This is kinda that big-picture look. As you remember, in December of 2015, Plaimer and Cressa completed the 10-year sinking fund, the study of moving forward the next 10 years, what were, what were our high priority projects, and what were, you know, the next levels of projects. And so what we really wanted to do was just get, get in front of you, what are some things we're thinking about. As you know, we really just have one major bond project next summer, because we put our others on hold for that Phase Four year for the summer due to the enrollment facility study. So we only have Churchill, so we really started now focusing on what sinking fund projects do we wanna get done and get underway, and then also thinking forward to that next year. So as you begin thinking about, okay, where are those dollars going, that, that long-term study is really helping to guide us. And then, as we get a little bit more detail about the work that needs to be done at each of those locations, we'll bring you the details. So this is really just big picture. This is what we're thinking about, what questions might you have? Are you comfortable with us starting to move forward in that direction, and having NTH begin to take a deeper look at that?
Yep, and there is also on the back, there's a schedule, just kinda outlines some of the same steps that we've gone through on the other projects. You know, obviously, we have schematic design, design development, we would kinda double-check the estimate, refine that, and then complete the construction drawings, bid the project out, come to, back to the board with recommendations, and then look for your approvals. So just kinda the same steps that we've been through before.
We've had some discussions with NTH as far as if they're gonna do the work, what type of costs we get, et cetera. So those are ongoing, but, but those are going well. And I know Paul's done a nice job of having a conversation of, if we're gonna do several projects, trying to bundle things together, something that'll make sense for the district.
Yeah, as I mentioned, NTH has, you know, been a, or I guess the district's been a client of theirs for a long time, and we wanna respect that, and they've done good work for us. But now that we're looking at not just doing one or two smaller projects, we're looking at doing five or six projects worth two to $2.5 million a year for the next two or three years, it made sense to go back to them and ask them to adjust their fee percentage, which we've done. So I think you'll be very happy with how that came out, so.
Thank you. I do have a question as far as what NTH is going to be doing for the district. I know before they did a lot of environmental. Is that all they're gonna be doing, or are they gonna be doing architectural work also?
Actually, so for this project, they're gonna be doing civil engineering work. We also use them for material testing, but we will not be using them for material testing on this project. I kinda have a rule of thumb of not using the same firm to do the design and the testing work. I think it's a little bit of a conflict of interest, and I don't, I just try to not do that typically, or our firm tries not to do that. So really, the environmental engineering or environmental consulting is really being handled mostly by ARC Environmental at this point. So really, it's just material testing on other projects and then civil engineering on these.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We don't have to, we've called on any of this.
No, we would like to spend a little bit of time, though, with you giving you a Churchill update, and letting you know where we're headed with that, when you're gonna see design development drawings and so on.
Yeah, there was a lot on the sinking fund right there, and we sort of jumped. The first part was supposed to be a little discussion.
Sorry.
No, I started it by saying something about the sinking fund, so to give you a chance to talk a little bit about Churchill High School.
Yeah, so Churchill, the design process is going well. As you know, we switched to French and SES on that project. They actually came in and had a little bit different take. I think the building administration turned over a little bit, too, since the previous time. We had kinda come up with the preliminary design work, so we kinda went back to the drawing board a little bit and came up with, I think, a better plan as far as how the auditorium is situated, how some of the ancillary spaces, the choir, the band, the vocal, capadans, and some other programs that use the space, or their adjacencies, I guess. So I think we have a good plan to go forward with. A couple things have come up. One, as you can imagine, the budget has some upward pressure on it, as did the other two high schools. There's, you know, those are very large buildings. The budgets were a little bit aggressive, probably. I think we're right around $1 million over budget on that project. The preliminary estimate actually said $2 million over, but as we've been going back and refining it, I think it's somewhere closer to $1 million. We're actually in the process of kinda going through that again. Keep in mind, that's a schematic design estimate, that's very high level, really just trying to give us a target to shoot at. There is one other major issue over there, though, and that is the mechanical system. If you remember Franklin, when we went into that building, we had some challenges with the mechanical system. We really wanted to make it consistent with all the other buildings in the district by putting in vertical unit ventilators, by making sure that we had the piping, hydraulic piping rather than steam piping, and some things along those lines. This one's a little bit different, but it's the same theme. We wanna make it consistent with the other buildings so that it's easier for maintenance and ordering materials and supplies and things like that. Over at Churchill, there's a pretty big chiller and cooling tower, which provides the air conditioning for the building. Those systems are grossly oversized, and they're pretty old. They're probably somewhere around 20 to 25 years old. So one, they're not functioning that well. There's some pretty high maintenance costs associated with them. And two, they're just not sized correctly for the building anymore. At one time, more of the building was served from them, but that's not the case anymore. So we probably spent the last couple of months talking about, should we keep them and just put new controls on them? Should we demolish them altogether and come up with, you know, self-contained cooling for different spaces? Should we put in a new chiller and cooling tower that's smaller? That would be more adequate for the building, the portions of the building that it still serves. We've been going around and around and around, and we've come up with a recommendation, which we think is the right one, and that is to actually get rid of the chiller and the cooling tower, and to go to self-contained cooling in all the different spaces. If you think about the building now, if the principal and the secretary are in the building over the summer and they need air conditioning, you have to run a 400-ton chiller and cooling tower, which is not very effective. Same thing with the auditorium. If you only wanna use the auditorium, you have to run the entire unit to serve, that serves half the building just to run that one space. And in talking through that, I think it makes a lot of sense just to give all the different spaces their own self-contained cooling. We think the price tag for that is somewhere, it's probably somewhere between $800,000 and $1 million. By the time you look at all the controls and all the piping and things that have to be reworked, there's some existing units that are fed from the chillers, so now you have to take the cooling portion out of that unit, put a new coil in and a new compressor in. So it's pretty complicated. It gets really complicated when the controls get involved in that, and separating everything, but we think it's somewhere around there. And we think it's the right time to do it, to try to come, to try to get, to try to take the existing unit and leave it, and get five or six more years out of it, and then come back and do this project later. You're gonna have to undo a lot of the work that would be done now.
And that was one of the concerns. We're already in there, so.
Exactly. And then to downsize and keep a chiller, you're still gonna be stuck with having to run large portions of the building just to cool one area, which doesn't make a lot of sense as far as it impacts the general fund and the energy cost. So we think it's the right time to do it.
And there's nothing that says, I mean, it may go five more years, but I know that Harry has said several times that it's, it's had its life, and so everything from here on is, you know, we don't know when it might go. So that, that could be problematic, too. It does seem to be the right time. We've had discussions. You know, our district folks also believe that if we're gonna do it, do it the right way, be able to have the efficiency in the building in certain units. If you just need the auditorium, you can just cool the auditorium, things like that. And frankly, like you said, it's that end of life, and it's way overdone for what it, what it needs to be cooling, so.
Yeah, it is. 400 tons is a lot, so. So I guess what we're asking is, if the board would consider augmenting the budget with $1 million from the sinking fund, similar to what we did at the other two high schools, where we moved, I think, $2.5 million for each. That would still leave us about $1 million over budget at this time. We should have, or we will have updated DD drawings here in the next couple of weeks, which means we'll have updated budget numbers on December 5th, when we'd come back and present the DD presentation, where we show what the new auditorium is gonna look like, and the new building renovations and that type of thing. And we're gonna do our best between now and then to keep that budget heading downward and not upward, so. But I don't know exactly where we'll end up, so.
Okay, questions? Mrs. Bonnefield?
I know most, the majority of our schools are not air-conditioned. For the most part, I realize that the offices and computer labs are. Are there any, are there, is there any available space where it's not required, necessary to have a cooling system, where we could downsize the number of rooms that are?
We went room by room, didn't we?
Yeah, and actually, we're gonna do that one last time, because I wanna, I asked the engineers actually to color up a floor plan and show every single room that has air conditioning, because Churchill's kind of a unique layout. There's a lot of classrooms that don't have windows. They're interior classrooms.
Oh.
There's some special ed programs. There's the library, or the media center, I should say. There's the auditorium. So there are a lot of unique spaces over there. We've been through it a couple of times, but we probably still need to go back through it one last time.
So pretty much, if there's air conditioning, it's a necessary...
Yeah, we're trying to look through which rooms need. Like you said, there's so many interior rooms, all the labs, not, I shouldn't say all, but there are several labs that are interior, and there's...
Our rule of thumb on all the buildings has been if it had air, it gets it again, and if it's a landlocked classroom without a window, then it would get air conditioning. But other than that, we're not adding air conditioning, just add it.
Yeah.
But this would help, with that said, as Paul mentioned earlier, this would help to be able to zone off, if you will, and only run certain areas at certain times of the year when you don't need to cool all of that, when you only need certain portions in the summer, et cetera.
And I'm assuming, then, that it's also going to be easier to, to control each room, 'cause sometimes when you have those huge air conditioning units, it'll be 80 in one room and 60 in another room. But if we have the individual units, then it'll be a more comfortable atmosphere?
Yep, the zone control will be a lot better, especially with the new control system.
Okay.
Other questions?
So this really isn't unlike our other big high school projects, where we've had some things, you know, at Stevenson, as Paul mentioned, you know, we had some significant site work, and we augmented the bond budget with some of the sinking fund monies to do that. At Franklin, you remember, it was the significant mechanical systems and some of the issues there. And so really, this is our, our deep dive into each of these schools and their unique nature. This is a bit of the unique, the unique element of Churchill, but not quite at the price point at, at the previous two, when we had to augment the budget. So we'll, we'll generally move forward in that direction, but of course, you know, you'll have the final approval of all that as we bring the design development drawings to you at the first committee meeting in December.
And again, at this point, there's no action required.
Right.
Okay. So does that complete, A, update on sinking fund projects?
Yep, other than there's just on the back, again, there's a little schedule update on Churchill, just to give you an idea how it's...
Okay. And that'll take us to the next item, B, discussion of bid result for the boiler replacements at Frost.
So the existing boilers at Frost, they're, they're coming to the end of use, end of life, as, as we know, and after more than 20 years of use. So we've been talking about the boiler pilot, and we're gonna be, we went out for bid, we did get the bid results in, and we wanna present them to you and show you, I believe you have the, the item with you, that the lowest responsible bidder was Contrast Mechanical out of McComb Township, Michigan, at $119,000. So we wanted to bring that forward to the board to proceed.
Questions? Mrs. McDonald?
So the, Paul, they all bid the same boiler systems?
Mm-hmm.
So everything's identical as far as, because there's kind of...
I don't think we had a closed spec, but we did have a very, very specific specification about the type of condensing boiler that we wanted and all the other accompaniments to that, the control system and all of that. We actually were very strategic, again, I think, especially Harry and Wayne, because they're so familiar with the systems, about trying to actually salvage some of the existing boilers as backup boilers, and only replacing what we thought we needed for a normal... boilers as backup boilers and only replacing what we thought we needed for a normal winter. So we actually, instead of replacing them all, we've only replaced a portion of them and saved the old ones as backups. And actually, I think the bids came in pretty favorably. Contrast was the mechanical contractor at Franklin, so they're pretty, pretty well-versed in the types of systems that we've been putting in in the district, the controls, the piping and things like that. So, actually, I was very happy to see them at the top of the list.
Other questions? All right, then, we can put this on...
Regular agenda.
The regular agenda. Very good. And we'll go to item C, discussion of bus purchases.
So, Harry Lau and I brought to you on October 24th the information to the board regarding how to, that we wanted to put out for bid, the purchase of 24 new school buses from the 2013 bond, and this would be the final planned bus purchase out of that bond. Since then, we did put the bid on the street, and it is not due to get open until the 17th. So, we just wanted to kind of come and update you again and let you know, we did put it out, and we have until the 17th until it closes. So I expect to be bringing back to you soon the results of that, and hopefully, they're very favorable results. There was, I did share with you, I think there was a question at our study session about how our fleet looks and then would look, based on years and types and whatnot, and there is a sheet on the back. See how I typed it out? In my brain, it made sense to go left to right and kind of before and after. If you didn't quite follow what I was trying to do there with replacing the oldest ones with the new purchases, if that goes through, feel free to let me know, and I'll see if I can explain it. I know sometimes I create things, and I step back a day later and look at them and go, "Oh, I hope others are going to understand that."
So what we really want to do is give you the big picture of how many buses will be in our inventory, and then the age of the fleet. That was really the intent with this information.
It's getting newer. It's getting much newer, as you can see.
Okay, any questions on this?
So this is, go ahead.
That's okay.
And it's wet me over there.
No, I didn't. It's my turn. The buses that we're bidding, is there any specific model that we are bidding for, or...
I don't have the bid with me. They do have in the bid the specifications of the types of buses, the passengers, et cetera, and the exact numbers that we want of each. I didn't bring the bid with me, but the details are in there, and they will be very similar to the items that we, they're basically the bids that we're doing. We updated previous ones, other than dates and numbers of buses. So they should come back specified, very similar to what we have.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Because we didn't change anything in that sense.
Any other questions? So what's the timetable for getting these actually into the fleet?
Well, we want to, we want to actually get turned around pretty quickly, because as I understand it, the models that we get now, it, they'd be better priced than if we wait over the winter further, because the, as with your cars that you buy, there's that year, and the dealer wants to get rid of their cars to you and the regular automobiles and vans, et cetera. Same idea. We can get a better theoretically cost now or price now as these come in. So we're hoping for a good number, because they want to move their fleets and get the 17s going. So we're looking for some good prices on this one, and we want to bring them in. Originally, it was talked about in spring, summer of '17, but Peggy in the Transportation Department definitely has said she can get those minis out there right now. Like, we need the minis out there right now. We're getting some buses that we have to take off of the roads. We want to make sure that we're getting the new ones in. So we don't want to delay and wait until, until next school year. We're looking to actually put some of these on the road this school year.
So the bids are doing the '17.
Mm-hmm.
How quick a turnaround can you get that information back and forth?
They open it up, and the next, the next meeting that we have, we can share with you what the results are.
Yeah, we anticipate bringing it to the December 5th committee meeting for voting on December 19th. And then if we can do that, and those are in stock, you know, the ones that have to be ordered, obviously, will have a longer lead time, the ones that are ready to go, we'd like to bring in, as Phil said, and as you know from some of the reports I've shared with you recently, we have some of our mini buses that have been taken out of commission, and so we do need to get some of those replaced. We are ordering not only the conventional buses, but also some of the larger buses with the wheelchair lifts as well. So, three different types of buses we'll be bringing into the fleet, and then whatever is available and ready to go, we'd like to take receipt of those. And as Phil said, that was originally planned for the May-June timeframe, but what we'd like to do is we have those monies allocated. We know that that was going to be in the second series bond monies, and we'd like to move forward on that.
All right, thanks. We'll look forward to that. Then we're down to item D, and in keeping with our theme of transparency, we'll talk about windows.
We do have the central office complex windows that some, as Paul had mentioned, were replaced in the back. We had, I guess, an emergency replacement need or an immediate replacement need at the time, but then Lisa Abbey and the rest of the team started looking at other windows, the rest of the windows. We have 69 replacement windows that we put out to bid and opened the bid, and we have the numbers for you with the low responsible bidder being Butcher &amp; Butcher out of Rochester Hills, Michigan, for a total cost of $19,300 for 69 windows. So we wanted to bring that to you and see if that was something out of the sinking fund, if we were, if the board was wanting to move forward with replacing the other 69 windows in the central office complex, or not, I guess is the question.
So, just a couple of quick notes about that. So, this is the second time we've gone out to bid on this. So the first one, we didn't have great bid coverage. There was only one bid that came back. It was quite a bit higher. So, Harry put this back out on the street, and we had better bid coverage and much better response. And so, just so you know, this is not the first pass at it. We, what we saw the first time, we were not comfortable bringing forward to you. We thought it was high, and especially when you only have one bid to consider. We felt it was important to get back out there. And so he has been pretty dogged on that, and then has recently been communicating with Phil on this piece, had some walkthroughs with some companies. And as you know, we, as Phil said, the back building had the issues with the two large windows that were single windows, that we had two that spontaneously, you know, broke and burst. So we replaced those back ones. The front, although we don't have the significant issue with windows spontaneously combusting or popping out, we have had significant issues with leakage, which are causing, you know, the trickle-down effect from the second floor into the, you know, the ceiling of the first, and also simply, I mean, they are single-pane windows. They're very energy inefficient. And so, although, as you know, we had not planned for any bond upgrades at the administration building, this would be a sinking fund purchase, and certainly something we would recommend, not only for, you know, just the, the least of which is the comfort of the offices, but primarily because of energy efficiency, and then just quite frankly, they are just no longer the seals, and the windows themselves are no longer holding up.
They're 50-plus years.
50-plus years old.
Any questions? Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. Just the problem that caused the trickle-down, the literal trickle-down, has that problem been corrected so that we can put new windows in there without this happening again?
Well, part of it is the seal of the windows, and so we do, we need to get those windows out and new windows put in, and when that happens, we anticipate that that will take care of the issue. Yeah.
Lee, are you speaking about the back building? That issue with the water coming in?
Right, because before, it was a roof issue, I thought.
Oh, the back building, yes. Those issues, yes. Those issues have been taken care of. I'm sorry, I thought you meant the issues we're having in this building here. Yeah. These are a little different than those, and yes, those issues have been taken care of.
Okay, so these windows are just for the front building?
Yes.
There's 69 in just the front?
Yes.
That's a lot.
It is.
Mr. Centers.
Oh, I was just noting that for this price and the amount of windows and the size of our windows, this is a, I would say, surprisingly low bid. I expect it to be higher. One, the energy efficiencies, but, two, we've all been in here during the winter, and it's really uncomfortable working conditions for people to have to sit through. I want our sinking fund dollars to go towards the schools. It's something I've really been passionate about, but we have to also take care of our staff, too. And this is an important, in my opinion, an important upgrade for us, so I would support going forward with us.
Mrs. McDonald.
I know we talked about the windows before. Were there some fire safety hazards with the current windows as well?
Oh, you can't fit through, most people can't fit through egress-type of sizing.
Right, so there would, there would be some fire, additional fire...
So if you're in a, if you're in a first-floor office and you're in an area where you do not have ready access to the door to exit, or an exterior door to exit, when you do any upgrades, we would be grandfathered in currently, but when you do any upgrades, or if you do any replacements, then you do need to have egress windows that can pop out, that you can exit without using a door exit. So this would match that need as well.
Okay, which would improve the safety enhancement of the...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well said.
Mrs. McDonald.
The manufacture of the windows, are they the same quality or comparable to what was installed in the back building, or is it same?
You know, I'd have to check if we put the same specs on the window. I want to say I'd assume so, but I don't want to just assume for you, so I'll double-check with Harry on the specs from the back versus these current ones.
I'm pretty sure it's comparable, but I should double-check.
President Burton.
And if these are approved, can these be put in before at least the worst of the winter hits us, or is this going to be a spring project?
Um, it depends. Usually, windows are eight to 10 weeks from contract award. They've got to put some middles in, that takes a couple of weeks, and then probably eight to 10 to get the windows in, so it'll probably be in the winter.
And they would be, they would be installed in the winter?
They can, yeah.
We had hoped, that was part of our hesitation when we, when we said, "No, we're not going to take this and go back out." Clearly, it would have been better if we could have gotten that in then, but to be honest with you, the price savings, even if, even if it did have to get pushed back a bit, is worth it.
And the folks at this table are aware, but for the public, some of the windows were so old, they literally fell out, what, a year or so ago? Luckily, nobody was underneath them, but this is truly a safety issue in this building. I appreciate our employees working in the only building that's not going to, you know, have, have bond dollars attached to it, but we do need to take care of our staff, make sure they're safe.
Any other questions? I have one. I'm assuming, and this may be something that's blatant, but this includes installation. I mean, Harry's not going to be out there lifting windows, right?
Well, he may, but yes, it's not a good...
He'll still be out there, I'm sure, but...
Sometimes those very evident things go by the wayside. You go, "Oh, we never thought of that." Okay, then this needs to go on regular...
Regular agenda, next week.
And mercifully, President Burton, that brings us to the end of Building and Site.
All righty. We are now on item six, Legislative Committee. Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you, President Burton.
Thanks, guys.
This is all quest. An update on the Wayne County...
Thank you, Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you, Mrs. McDonald. Just a, just one last recap. This will be our last recap on this topic before the election. As you know, and we've been talking about this since, since late last spring, with the board taking a position on this with regard to putting this in front of our voters. In July, we took a vote on that, and tomorrow, the voters in Wayne County will be asked a question on the ballot, and so I just wanted to go over just the informational pieces related to that. So again, the question on the ballot is the Wayne County Educational Enhancement Millage. The millage is a request to levy two mills on properties in Wayne County for a six-year period of time. That would generate approximately $80 million, which would be distributed equitably per student across the 33 public school districts in Wayne County. So across those 33 school districts, the dollars would generate, again, approximately $385 per pupil in your district. Wayne County RISA would utilize your fall count. So for Livonia Public Schools, that would generate approximately $5.5 to $5.6 million annually, beginning the second half of this school year would be our first receipt of those dollars, and then the five years thereafter. One piece of, a couple important pieces regarding this, this military quest is, one unique element of this is that local boards of education will determine the greatest priority needs in a school district. So as you can imagine, across 33 school districts, those needs look a little bit different. Some districts are focused on facility needs, some are focused on program needs, some are focused on staffing needs. So each local school district, as part of their thorough and detailed budget prioritizing process, would incorporate these funds into their general operating revenue. So again, I know you're familiar with the fact that since the advent of Proposal A, we are not able to go to our local communities to request an operational millage. So we are, with regard to sinking funds, which are for our facilities, or a bond issue, but the dollars for operating a district, which we usually refer to as programs and people and resources, can only be generated through a regional millage. And so the Wayne County Educational Enhancement Millage is intended to provide revenue, a guaranteed revenue stream over those six years to the 33 public school districts in Wayne County. So, that question will be before our voters tomorrow on the ballot, and I just wanted to, if anyone had any clarifying questions or questions they've received from the community, as you know, we have done 54 informational presentations across our district on this topic with parents, with the community, and with our staff. And again, our district was the host for a four-district school funding forum on October 13th. For anyone who did not have an opportunity to see that, that took a bigger-picture look at the issue of adequate funding for public education in Michigan. That video is available on our website, as is a Legislative Action Alert card, where our residents, our community members, our parents, our staff, we encourage them to be informed about the issue of adequate funding for our public schools, especially since the adequacy study that was completed this summer identified that Michigan schools are underfunded by approximately $1,000 per pupil annually. So we had an opportunity to talk about that at the school funding forum, and a piece of information that was also discussed was the Wayne County Education Enhancement Millage. So again, that question is before the constituents across the region tomorrow, and if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. Not a question so much as a comment. I've had people ask me, "If we need extra money, why don't we just take it from the bond dollars?" Because the community was kind enough to vote that in. And our community needs to understand that we have several different sources of revenue and several different ways that we can spend them, but we cannot take money legally from one bucket and move it to another bucket. Our operational dollars that we use for books and staffing and other types of day-to-day needs can only be increased in one of three ways, either by increasing enrollment, which obviously the trend hasn't been going in that direction, or by getting an increase in the foundational allowance from the state, which hasn't been forthcoming. Or the third way, legally, the only third option, is this county-wide millage. There's no other way for us to get operational dollars. We can't take them from the bond fund. We can't take them from the sinking fund. By law, our hands are tied.
Excellent point. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. And I think it's the same thing that you're saying, Mrs. Jarvis, is that there's a distinction when you have a bond issue. You have to use those bond dollars for a very specific thing. Same thing with the sinking fund. We are limited by law as to what we can use the sinking fund dollars for. A millage such as the enhancement millage is more for your general fund use, and we have more local control over those dollars and how they are spent than you do with the bond and the sinking fund. The other thing, I think it's important, and I've heard, I've had people confuse the two ballot issues, the transportation, the rapid transit with the enhancement millage, and they tend to get them a little bit confused, and they tend to think that they're connected in some way, and they are not. And people need to understand the distinction between those two ballot proposals. And people need to understand the distinction between those two ballot proposals.
Mr. Centers.
I just want to give a compliment to Mrs. Oakquist. There's been a lot of questions from the media, a lot of community questions about what this will mean for Livonia and the greater area. We've seen time and time again, whether it's radio or television, people have gone to Mrs. Oakquist. You are a very, very well-informed presenter, and you've taken a lot of time with us, and we really appreciate you representing the views of the district and what it could do for students. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? That's it for legislative tonight.
Yeah, election season will be over no matter what as of November night, right?
Tomorrow night, yes.
Tomorrow night. Our TV news may focus on something else.
Yeah. The weather or anything.
The next item on our agenda is Item Seven, Policy. Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes, thank you. I believe Mrs. Scott is going to be helping us out.
There'll be several, depending on which policy we choose.
Okay. All right.
We share the will.
Excellent. So our first board policy is EDDB walkers and riders.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield, and good evening, President Burton, members of the board, and Superintendent Oakquist. I bring you tonight Board Policy EDDB entitled Student Transportation Walkers and Riders. And as was discussed at our last board study session, it is being recommended to add a clarifying statement to the existing policy as it relates to transportation eligibility. The statement being added is within the first paragraph stating eligibility for transportation is based on a student's home address. And also to more accurately reflect the school district's name, was it like the fifth paragraph, it would say Livonia Public Schools School District. So we recommend those two changes to be made.
Okay. Wow. That's great.
We've had a lot of dialogue. We've had the soap for the last one.
We've struggled with this, so I'm really happy. And I'm just going to ask the question. I know that we talked at length about the wording and that it created other loopholes, and we're all on board with, this is a clarifying statement. It's not going to create any other misunderstanding. It's not going to fix one misunderstanding and create another one.
I think it just makes it a little more clear than how it was stated before. Will there still be questions? Yes.
Yes.
There will still be questions.
Okay.
But questions that can't be necessarily put into a policy like that.
Good. Okay. Anything else? And then we're going to vote on this.
No.
First reading. Oh, that's right. First reading. You're right. First reading. Okay, I'm going to put that down. Okay. Wow. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we're going to move on to EEV Wellness for Students.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. Good evening, everyone. The recommendations that we are bringing to you tonight are to make changes to Board Policy EEV Wellness for Students. These changes, recommended changes, were reviewed with the Board of Education during the Committee of the Hall meeting on October 24th, and I'll review, summarize those changes, and go over them with you this evening. As the board knows, we had two PEP grants, one to support our elementary PE program and another one to enhance our secondary program, our secondary PE program. And as a requirement for having PEP grants, we have to revise our student wellness board policy to align with federal guidelines, specifically to reflect the current federal wellness policy regulations. So before we began the process of revising our district's wellness policy, we were waiting for the USDA Food and Nutrition Service Center to provide us with guidance on the required components. These guidance documents were finalized on July 29th, 2016, and included requirements for local education agencies to fully comply with the USDA written wellness policy by June 30th of 2017. So we use these guidance documents to make the recommended changes that we are bringing to you tonight. And in general, what these recommended changes include are two new topics, a district wellness committee topic and a fundraising topic, as well as a describing paragraph for each of these. We are recommending that we replace two existing paragraphs with new ones on two different topics, and then we are also recommending that we add a new paragraph to one additional topic. So now, moving on to the Board Policy EEV. We start the policy with an introductory paragraph, and we are not recommending any changes to that paragraph. The next topic is a new topic called District Wellness Committee. The details provided in the paragraph beneath that topic heading allow us to be compliant with federal regulations, and that paragraph will read, "The district will convene a representative district wellness committee to establish goals for and oversee school health and safety policies and programs, including development, implementation, periodic review, and update of this district-level wellness policy." The next two headings and describing paragraphs, nutrition education and nutrition standards, are already compliant, so we are not recommending any changes to those two parts of the board policy. The fourth topic, fundraising, is a new topic, and then the details provided in the supporting paragraph allow us to be federally compliant, and that paragraph would read, "Foods and beverages that meet or exceed the USDA smart snacks in school nutrient standards may be sold through fundraiser on the school campus during the school day. The district will make available to teachers, club leaders, and coaches information on fundraising, as well as tracking of the individual fundraisers by the principal." Next topic, physical education and physical activity opportunities. We are recommending that we replace the existing paragraph with a paragraph that we see on the next page that reads, "The district's physical education instruction is aligned with the K-12 Michigan Physical Education Content Standards and Benchmarks. The district shall offer physical education opportunities that include the components of a quality physical education program. Physical education shall equip students with the knowledge, skills, and values necessary for lifelong physical education." Okay, and then the next paragraph, we are recommending that it stay as-is. The next heading, Other School-Based Activities Designed to Promote Student Wellness. The first paragraph would remain as-is without any changes, and we are recommending adding an additional paragraph that will meet federal requirements, and that paragraph would read, "The district will integrate wellness activities across the school setting. The district will coordinate and integrate other initiatives related to physical activity, physical education, nutrition, and other wellness components, so all efforts are complementary, not duplicative, and work towards the same set of goals and objectives promoting student well-being, optimal development, and strong educational outcomes." If you remember, when we presented this paragraph originally, we had in the first sentence across the entire school setting, and based on input from the board, we removed the word In the next topic, Implementation and Measurement, we are recommending that we eliminate the paragraph and replace it with a new paragraph that would read, "The district wellness committee shall develop and implement an annual progress report or a triennial progress report. These reports will be placed on the district's website, available for public review. The district wellness committee will make recommendations to the Board of Education to update or modify the wellness policy based on the results." And these progress reports, then, would be based on the goals that are established by the wellness committee as indicated in the paragraph that describes the wellness committee on the first page. We're also updating the legal reference at the bottom. We are replacing the current, I'm sorry, the, yes, the current legal reference with the new legal reference, which is Section 204 of Public Act 111-296, the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010. This act strengthens the original wellness policy, as well as provides for more transparency in the policy. And joining me this evening is Mrs. Cheryl Archibald, our district's K-12 Physical Education and Health Teacher Leader, and she and I are welcome to respond to any comments or questions from the board.
Any questions?
I have one additional modification I'd like to suggest. In the, under nutrition standards in the third paragraph...
Yes.
I think it should read, "The superintendent or her designated shall evaluate the vending policies."
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, Mrs. Burton. President Burton.
Should we put his/her designated, just so it covers?
Or I was just going to put "or designated."
That'd be fine.
Thank you, President Burton. Does anybody else have any questions?
I do have one question. It comes to the lunch programs and wellness. It sort of dovetails into what we're talking about here, but I had some, I helped last week over with the backpacks program, and I was told that we didn't offer a summer program last year for nutrition, but there were federal funds available. Do you, can you clarify for me on that?
I can, sure. So we do offer opportunities for students participating in our summer school programs. So at Churchill, we had, we partnered with the Goodfellows, I believe...
Yes.
...to provide lunch to over 200 students that attended each day as part of that program. And then, as you know, we have Camp Frost and Camp Emerson. Camp Frost and Camp Emerson, we provide a breakfast, a snack, and a lunch to all students participating in those programs. Prior to that, we have had, we had been a host for a summer lunch program. I believe it was held at Cleveland, if I may recall, and we had relatively, quite low participation, on average, maybe 10 people, if that, sometimes as low as none or just a couple of folks each day. And you could come from anywhere in the district to that location for the summer program. What we found was, the majority of families or students looking to take advantage of that were taking advantage of other programs we were offering, such as Camp Emerson or Camp Frost. It's certainly something, I know Mrs. Jarvis had brought that up to us last year, and we had said we would, again, prior to this summer, look into that piece to see if we thought that was something we wanted to offer. But we did talk with our food service department before and after that program was offered, and again, there was very, very, very little participation in that. So it's certainly something we could revisit, but it was not something that we continued on for last summer, or I believe the summer prior, either.
Do you think it would be maybe a good idea? Because I was amazed with the number of students that are eligible for reduced lunches, like 4,400 students, which I was really taken aback by that number. And so maybe if we surveyed those folks, because maybe they don't even, they didn't even realize that this opportunity was out there for them.
Certainly, that's something we could look into.
Because I'm sure summer comes, they just don't stop, you know, being hungry and in need, and so, you know, something maybe we should really look into as an option.
Sure, absolutely. And we, we're pleased that we get to a number of those kids, because part of participating in those others.
Right.
Absolutely. And if there are other ways that we can do that, there are sites available that we do, we do notify our families of the other sites. So there are some sites within a couple of miles of our school district, specifically in Wayne Westland, that were available last summer, and we did make those sites available to families. So if they wanted to take advantage of those and were able to get to those areas, they could certainly do that as well. You can go to any of those sites, not just within your own district. So we did make those sites available to families as well, but we can absolutely take a look and see if that's something there, you know, that folks would want us to consider again within our district.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, sure.
Just to kind of go with that, I know from the experience with Rotary that, you know, we've partnered to help with the food pantry at Emerson, and also, we've started one at Franklin.
Right.
And with long discussions with Mrs. Owen at Emerson, that I think the administration in each building is pretty tuned in to the kids' needs and trying to make sure that the kids are discreetly notified and helped. So, and with the, a survey, I'm not sure with the discretion issues, you know, where that falls in, but it is amazing what the numbers are, and I do think that there's, other than the programs that we see, I think that the kids are given a lot of assistance without a lot of fanfare. So I...
I understand that part of it, and, you know, I was surprised when that surprised me. Yeah, I guess I was surprised with the numbers, but, you know, what they were telling us was that it's the older students that are probably, that they're the ones that take it harder to bring food home, you know, for their families and for the weekend. So they were just trying to figure out some way to maybe break down that barriers, you know, but, you know.
It's a problem.
So, thank you.
You're back. Does anybody else have any other questions or concerns? Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. This was all based on the requirements under the PEP grant, right?
With the second PEP grant, we had to agree to update the wellness policy. However, all school districts that participate in the school lunch program or the school breakfast program have to comply by June 30th of 2017. So we were just kind of fortunate and kind of had a heads-up.
Does, the language that we have for the updates to the policy, are we certain that that language complies with any requirement that we may have under the grant?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, we're going to put it on as a first reading.
Oh, how quickly she learns.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
And the last item on our agenda this evening is Item Eight, Personnel Committee. Mr. Centers.
Thank you, President Burton. We have one item this evening. It's Administration Evaluation Tool, and Mr. Wintery, and it looks like Mr. Francis is joining us.
I couldn't get enough FaceTime before, so.
I understand.
I used to.
Gentlemen, we get enough.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, President Burton, and board members, and Superintendent Oakquist. We just wanted to give you a brief summary of where we are at right now with our compliance with recently enacted law as it relates to administrator evaluations. Back in November of 2015, the legislature passed PA 173. And 173 modified, revised school code, and it revised in particular a section called We had a 1249 before. We now have a 1249B. And what it essentially did, for purposes of tonight, is it implemented requirements under a separate section of the code for administrator evaluations. And it, the most simple requirement of that section is it now requires an evaluation system for building-level administrators and central office administrators who are regularly working on the school. for building-level administrators and central office administrators who are regularly involved in instructional matters. Why did they do that? I think this is all part of the state's effort to improve student achievement. And by improving, hopefully, our administrator performance via regular feedback, performance plans, we encourage excellence in administration, thereby hopefully translating that to our education for our students. So just wanted to highlight a few of the requirements under that section. Not all of them, because there's quite a number, but the key ones for us. First, it made these evaluations mandatory. Second, there's a requirement that 25% of the evaluation must be based on student growth. And because it's for administrators, that student growth at the building level would be based on student growth in that building. For central office administrators, we would be measured based on district-wide student growth. And I, as I go through a few of these, I'll mention one by one that even though some of these requirements for the overall evaluation don't come into play until this year, we've already been doing most of these things. And the first two, we're already doing evaluations for administrators. We're already using that 25% measure. I should mention that in the year 2018-19, that goes to 40%. But until then, the requirement is 25% for student growth. The student growth is used as an aggregate, as I mentioned. Ratings, we have to use the ratings of ineffective, minimally effective, effective, and highly effective. Ratings we're already using, not only for administrators right now, but also for our There's a requirement in the law for a, an improvement plan for teachers, or excuse me, for administrators who are rated ineffective or minimally effective, and then a subsequent evaluation to monitor progress on that improvement plan. The portion of the administrator's evaluation not based on student growth is to be primarily based on the criteria of the administrator evaluation tool. We'll talk a little bit more about that. And it has to be a tool approved by the state. Other requirements, the portion not based on the student growth or the specific measures of that tool have to include a measure of proficiency of the administrator or the administrator designee in using the evaluation tool. For instance, we would be measuring our administrators and how they are evaluating others. It would be, it would include progress made by the school, or in the case of a central office administrator, the school district, on the school improvement plan, pupil attendance at the school level or the district level, student, parent, and teacher feedback as available, and other information as deemed pertinent by the evaluator. And in our case, with the tool that we're implementing, those items are measured within that tool. Key is that the law required districts to now use one of two named evaluation tools, either the School Advance Tool or the REES Multi-Dimensional Leadership Performance System. Or there wasn't a third possibility. If you don't use one of those two systems, you may use a locally developed one. However, if you do that, that has to be approved by the state, and that would require that system to be validated, significant effort. You must have within that district the financial wherewithal, resources, the staff time, and the staff expertise in order to validate that test, because this, that will be counted on by the state, and it would have to withstand the challenge. Therefore, I think statewide, you're going to see very few districts going that route. The law requires consistency. All the tools must be used consistently across the district and applied the same for similarly situated employees. We have to provide training for those who are going to be administering that evaluation, as well as those who are actually being evaluated. And there's posting requirements for, and this is all about transparency. So we have to post the research base for the tool, the assurances that any modifications don't compromise validity of that evaluation tool, the identity and qualifications of the authors, the evidence of reliability, validity, et cetera, and in effect, all the research that goes behind it. By the way, in the case of the tool that we're talking about, the School Advance Tool, that is 47 pages long. The evaluation frameworks and rubrics with detailed descriptions for each performance level and our plan for training. So as I said, we are in compliance with nearly all of that at this time. The one thing that we have to do is actually implement the new evaluation tool. We have gone, are going forward with implementing the School Advance Evaluation Tool. We received presentations from both providers. They both have great merit. You'll see districts going different directions. We felt pretty comfortable with that after we received their presentations. Why? Couple of the reasons it went into our thoughts on this is that obviously they both are, but this is research-based and validated. It's practical. We thought it was practical, although none of them are simple. But they are well thought out, and there is a logical approach that ties this to performance and ties it really to our teacher evaluations as well. We have, I think, in this tool manageable summative evaluations and ratings. We can phase in the implementation, and we propose to do so by doing portions in the next year, two or three. Many districts are going to four years for implementation. We haven't gone quite that far. After this year, we would expect to be about a third of the way implemented, based on implementing the number of characteristics that we measure. It's cost-effective. Very honestly, I think it's a bargain. We're going to be paying about $30 a building to implement that, except for the central office. And here, we're charged $30 per administrator in this building, district-wide, probably about $1,500, not including training costs. It works with PIVOT. You might recall that Phil, this, earlier this year, presented the teacher evaluation system and talked about the software that we would use, the technology behind it that allows us to implement this more efficiently. This system can use the PIVOT tool, which we are already going to be familiar with and have already paid for. It has evidence-based ratings. Spent a great deal of time in our training process with us, and we will with the building-level administrators, on the kinds of evidence that will be produced to stand behind the ratings that are, come upon with the annual evaluations. And it's distributed and supported by the Michigan Association of School Administrators. We feel pretty darn comfortable about that. It'll be used with many other districts, and so we feel we'll have a lot of collegial support between us and other school districts, and some comfort in numbers. We have a lot of colleagues to talk to about this. And very honestly, as time goes forward, I think it'll help us as we hire administrators. We like to hire from within, but sometimes our administrators come from outside the district. And there's a very good chance that they will have already been trained on this system. So where are we in implementation? Well, we signed a licensing agreement with School Advance. You'll see the links already posted on our website. We've made the, we've trained our central office evaluators. About a half a dozen of us have gone through the training. We are right now planning our professional development so that we can train our building-level administrators. That will be coming this fall and soon. We're going to do a pilot of it this weekend, or, excuse me, this week. We'll see how that goes. I mentioned before that where we are at on compliance, going over some of the other things that I talked earlier, we are already evaluating our administrators in a consistent annual basis. They've all been trained in our current instrument. They will very soon on this one. We've met the posting requirements. We are already measuring with, based on all the criteria that I earlier mentioned. So we're well along in our compliance on this. With that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Questions or comments? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Dana, did you say that both the evaluator and the evalu-e are trained on the, the instrument?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, in fact, some of the cabinet members have gone to full-day sessions already on this, and then we're developing the PD to train each of the administrators on the kinds of things they will be evaluated on.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
So this is not something the board needs to approve, but we felt it was important that you knew what we would be utilizing to evaluate central office administrators and our building principals and assistant principals and coordinators moving forward. So similar to bringing you information on 5D for the teachers, the superintendent's evaluation, and now the administrator evaluation. And so you may not be stalking our website regularly, but if you were, you would know that as, as these pieces are completed, we're including those pieces on our website to assure that we are meeting all of the required elements according to the revised school code.
Thank you.
All right.
That concludes personnel.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. Again, we do encourage folks to tune in to the next, basically six weeks or so of meetings the Board of Education. Please do, if you have an interest in discussing the potential recommendations from the Building Utilization and Enrollment Study, please do plan on attending the community forums. They are posted on our website, if you didn't catch them earlier this evening. And other than that, we are at the end of our agenda. I wish you all a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.